Layne Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse? Gerald Canaria, Jr.?
Yes.
Tyler Yalloway?
No.
Wendell Youngman, Jr.?
No.
Rhonda Gray?
Oh.
James Cross? Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
Richard Ironclad?
Yes.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston?
Huh.
Bernardo Rodriguez, Jr.?
Yes.
Garfield Steele?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Counsel, that motion carries 12 yes, 2 no. Thank you, counsel, for that. So we'll move. We want to, I believe it's item number seven in the new updated one, so I don't think it's on your agenda, but it'd be IHS, Mr. Driving Hawk and Dr. Jupnigo. So if you want to come up to them right away, Dr. Jupnigo and Mr. Driving Hawk. Or you can sit, yeah, actually you can sit right there. Yeah, that's fine. Thank you again, Mr. Littlehawk and Dr. Jupnigo for being here. So if you want to begin reports, I know that Mr. Driving Hawk, you're just kind of hearing the question capacity, but I don't know if you have anything to add, but that's fine.
No, I have nothing to add. Just thank you for inviting me here today and letting me participate in your honors ceremonies that's on here. I'm here today at your request. That's there to answer any questions on there. I do need to get back to Aberdeen, so I'd like to address my questions to me and then I'll let Dr. Jupnigo provide her regular report on the service unit that's there.
That's fine. Okay, this one. Counsel, are there any questions for Mr. Driving Hawk at this time? Counsel McClellan?
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, Mr. Driving Hawk. One of the concerns I have is in regards to the bills. I know we're handling quite a few bills at a meeting in Rapid City. Have them been taken care of or what's going on with those?
I'll respond to that. So we've taken care of most of those. There's a few of them that had been denied, so those would not be covered. But we have looked into each of them and Contract Health has contacted each patient and let them know what was going on.
They will receive some correspondence from you in regards to that?
Yes.
Yeah, and if they're denied, they'll be given a reason for denial, and then they have their appeal rights and that's in there, outlining there how they can appeal it. And there's, you know, three different levels of appeal that they could go through.
Additional questions for Counselor Rodriguez?
Now, with these new monies that are coming out, you guys are getting like a whole lot of extra cash. And I know it gets divvied out and you guys get what trickles down through the pipe. But it's still my personal feeling that, and we say it all the time, you know, you hear it all the time, but the treaty application, but we should never see a bill. We shouldn't. You guys refer us out and you get the bills so you can deny us instead of just paying like you're supposed to. You send those out. If I sent you to go with your car fixed, and it's my responsibility because it's a company car. But they send you the bill and you give it to me and I say, no, you took it to the shop. Here, you pay it. That's basically what's happening. So I myself personally feel that we should never see a bill, especially if you refer us out level 1, 2, 3, 4, 10. I don't care where it stands. And we should never see a bill. Especially if you're referring us out. You can't refer us out to anywhere for a school because you guys don't have anybody to do it. We shouldn't have to pay that bill because you sent us out. I wouldn't expect you to send the company car to the shop and then you pay the bill. It's my company.
Okay, first of all, let me address the new dollars that you referred to that came down under the rescue funds on there. Those funds are designated, there's a small portion of those funds that go to PRC. The PRC dollars that we did receive under the rescue funds are designated to handle COVID-related cases that are there. So those funds cannot be used for all cases, that all referrals that are there. Second of all, as far as the referral process goes, provider sees a patient. The provider says that they need to see a higher level of care that's on here, that we're services that we're not able to provide within our walls. The provider writes the referral. The patient still has to qualify for those services that's there. That's the way the law is written and we're following the guidelines of the law that is there. I understand what you're saying as far as the, in reference to paying all of those bills and in reference to that, but we have limited dollars and we allocate those dollars out across the referrals on there and they're paid accordingly if they are approved. That's there. They still have to go through that approval process. Unfortunately, that's just the nature of the madness of it and it's all driven by the dollars that we receive. Counsel, Ms. Gilbert?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good afternoon, Dr. Jupnigo, Dr. Driving Hawk. I guess my one question would be, what are we looking at the timeline of selecting the CEO? Or has a CEO been selected?
No, the CEO position is still being ready to go out for advertisement. Once the position will be advertised for 30 days, Mr. Amiatt will be leading those efforts in reference to that. Once we get the certified panel issued to him, he'll be reaching out to President Killer's office for participation in the interviewing and the selection process that's there on here. So that process is moving along. If you want specifics in reference to where it's at, I know the questionnaires, the advertisement, all of that, Mr. Amiatt is the one that's leading that charge on there. And I think, Joe, you let me know this morning, it's pretty close to getting put out on the street here. So it should be coming out and it will be advertised for 30 days.
Thank you. Counselman Steele?
Yeah, Mr. Driving Hawk, sometime back, the tribe passed a resolution to 638 the dispatch portion for air ambulance. And I know President Killer endorsed the letter and sent it to IHS. Do you have any knowledge or whereabouts of the letter or where we're at in that process?
I'm going to refer to Dan Davis, who was my partner coming down here this morning from Aberdeen on there. The proposal that's on here, he's the one that will be processing and handling that part of it there. Dan, why don't you come up and provide them an update of what we've received and what the process will be?
Yeah, let's see, I'm trying to do my dates straight, but the Friday before last, we did receive the tribe's proposal for the additional PFSA's associated with EMS. And within that resolution, there, I'm confirming that there was language associated with the air ambulance dispatch. And we'll be, I'm looking forward to negotiate that proposal. We'll be addressing that issue with dispatching the air ambulances. It's still very fresh on our table and as we work with your lead negotiator, this will be addressed and we are on a 90-day timeline for this. So over the next few months, hopefully we could get this all worked out.
Counselman Gilbert, or I'm sorry, Steele?
Yeah, for the record, what was your name again, sir? The last name?
I believe it was Dan Davis.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselman Gilbert.
Good afternoon, Mr. Davis.
Afternoon.
Nice to finally put the name to the face through all the emails and teleconferencing we've been doing for quite some time in regards to the EMS program.
Yes.
So I guess my question to you would be, as you already know and are aware, the tribe has negotiations and trying to figure out the EMS program. And Mr. Driving Hawk and I did have a little conversation about that. You know, and we all know that EMS is very underfunded in our area here. You know, our EMS, the EMTs are, you know, making almost $8.90 an hour and that's way below, way, way below the rate of what they should be getting paid. And so, you know, for me, as the former administrator and listening on those conversations, we had, you know, I think it needs to be addressed or at least maybe known that we are having these conversations, but also that we need to negotiate in good faith as well as, you know, the contract being upheld to what is supposed to be supplied to the tribe and not being supplemented. And we've had these conversations over and over again and time and time again. And so for me, you know, I'd like to have, still can, still be a part of those conversations with you in regards to the EMS program. You know, the EMS program is one of many in the master health contract that we get from the Indian Health Service, but also it's one of the crucial programs, especially during COVID when COVID hit. You know, we were running ambulances left and right and, you know, we were paying those individuals $8.90 and then eventually somewheres along the line, we paid them the hazard pay and whatnot. And now we're back to no more hazard pay, but now at the same time, and we all know EMS isn't cheap. And so for the ambulance service on our part, from the tribe's part, you know, we're going to negotiate, you know, very aggressively to help better the services here, especially with their wages. And I know it comes down to the third-party billing as well and we've gotten all into that conversation. So, you know, it's nice to finally put the name to the face here and
Thank you. And just to respond a little bit there, the Indian Health Service, that's our full intent, is to negotiate in good faith. We encourage, you know, a quick negotiation. We'll be working right there with you guys. In terms of negotiation, there's two sides, but we are one team and we'll come together on this, I assure you.
Thank you, Counselman Gilbert. Mr. Davis, what is your title?
I'm Deputy Area Director. I oversee the Office of Tribal Programs at the Area Office in Aberdeen.
Okay, thank you. Counselman Rodriguez?
We've had, like I said, I've also been part of the negotiations with the acquisition here. My question to you, or deal is, how long have we had the master health contract with IHS?
I've seen back as far as 93. I'm thinking it was before that, just in the records that I've looked at. So it's been quite a long time.
So EMS has been underneath the master healthcare for up to that point, as far back as you can remember?
In currently, where it sits within the tribal organization, your org chart, it's 95. The tribe, I think, had another entity that had managed it, so the EMS as it is today has been in the contract since 95.
So they've been in contract, we've been on the master health contract for, since at least 95. Why are we even negotiating if you guys held up here into the bargain?
I think what we're going to find is that there's going to be more work after we're done with this negotiation with the proposal that's on the table. You're pretty much looking at the existing funding, looking under all the rocks for the existing funding. That's what the proposal came in as. And we'll be trying to identify all of those funds and be very clear. We'll be coming in good faith. And when this is through, you might be still looking for additional funds, talking about, you know, making sure your third-party billing's up, lobbying, there's, you know, there's probably still going to be some effort that is needed.
What I'm saying is that the contract that you have with EMS hasn't been followed on your guys' half to fulfill your responsibility as for the oxygen materials that they need for units, GSA coverage. I know that price changes and it's on hand, I understand that part of it. But these are contracts that you're obligated by the master healthcare to pay that hasn't been paid. So why are we negotiating?
I think what we're negotiating is to maybe address some of those issues that have swayed away from the contract as written. That's, there'll be, there's within the world of ISDA, you get the contracted services like the EMS program and then you're going to have to retain services. And there are some retained services that, within the contract, within the language that's in there. If you were part of those discussions last fall, we had identified some of those and that's what we'll be negotiating, where the tribe is providing some of the services that the IHS has, you know, still obtained and the tribe is going to be receiving the funds associated with those retained services to pay for those bills that you're currently paying for. That's the way that the proposal is written, which is, I think, to address some of those issues that are causing bills to be incurred by the tribe.
We're going to give Counselman Youngman and then Counselman Gilbert.
I think Junior touched on my question a little bit, but it was 1993 when the tribe actually took over the EMS to IHS. You know, within the past 10 years, something has changed because I know I did 20 years in EMS down here and IHS funded all the things within that master health contract. So somewhere along the line, I mean, because they provided everything from the sheets all the way to the drugs and I don't know what happened between there, but I think that's something that needs to get back in there. And I don't know why it stopped. I mean, that's just my comment. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselman Gilbert.
Also, my colleague
All this time and we're finally being recorded? Let's start over. No, I'm kidding. But, I mean, that's something that we need help with, especially in that GSA side, because the deadline for this application to get reaccredited is coming up real short here. And that's something that the state won't let us do to build for both Medicaid or for Medicare. So we need that done as soon as possible if he can help us in that part there. And so that way, you know, we can start building up that third-party revenue because right now we're only building for Medicare. And, you know, it'd be nice to build for both. And that way, the revenue numbers for that program would come up. Because when the revenue comes up, then it could help supplement, you know, the wages and salaries that's there and we don't have to be paying them $8.90 an hour in their business. We can actually run it as a business instead of, you know, looking at just building the Medicare portion of it. So, I mean, so what the state is asking for is the titles to the vehicles or registration cards to those GSA vehicles. We've tried to use the VIN numbers, but unfortunately, the state doesn't run on VIN numbers. They'd actually like to see a document that says, these are GSA vehicles, this is the registration.
Yeah, I will jump on this one right away. This one doesn't have to worry any negotiations. I will do everything to help on this one. I'm glad to bring it up. We'll jump on it right away.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselman. Counsel, additional questions for Mr. Driving Hawk or Mr. Davis? I see none or here, Mr. Davis or Driving Hawk? I guess just along the lines of what you brought up earlier, Mr. Driving Hawk, around reimbursements, what burial costs that were referred out because of COVID? Have you found or received or sought, I guess, any guidance on that process? You know, and hopefully remedy that if we have outstanding cases?
Right. I know you brought that up to me before. I did send off the questionnaire asking for how we, what funds are eligible for that, how do we access those funds? That is with OGC, we haven't received a response back for that. But when I get back to the office in the morning, you know, I'll follow up and see if they've been able to resolve that that's on here. So with that, but I'll follow up and I'll get, I'll report that back to you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Driving Hawk. Counsel, additional questions for Mr. Driving Hawk or Mr. Davis? I believe, yeah, you guys have to get on the road, right, to Aberdeen?
Yeah, I mean, I'm here. So, I mean, if there's anything else that you, you know, I'm here to answer any questions that you have, either follow-up for our meeting in Rapid City, follow-up for a meeting that we had out at the college before that's there on here. So as long as you got me here, let's take advantage of the time and ask me any questions that you may, that you may have, for sure.
Counsel, anything else for Mr. Driving Hawk? If you want to get your, Dr. Jupnigo will probably read it. So thank you.
Thank you. I did send this out to all of you, but I'll stick to the bullet points and then you can let me know if you have questions. So regarding, I know contract health is always a hot topic with the community and with tribal council. Currently for contract health, our average weekly spending is $363,000. Our medical priority funding level right now, we're funding the priority levels of ones and some twos. We've also been able to go back and look at some of the deferred referrals that had been previously considered not within priority and we went back and paid for those referrals. And that's something that we do on an ongoing basis. For example, if something's considered a lower level priority two or three, about quarterly, we'll go back and look at those referrals. And if we have funding available, then we'll approve those. And then we let the patients know about that as well. We're continuing to promote the COVID vaccinations and as you're aware, we've been able to offer the Pfizer COVID vaccine to children ages 12 and older. To date, Pine Ridge Service Unit IHS has administered over 14,000 vaccinations. We've continued to provide COVID vaccination events in all of the communities. We just finished with providing vaccines at all of the OLC college centers. And we're starting another, and we'll send out updated PSAs. I know a lot of people were asking for that. We're planning on being, we have a COVID vaccination event actually this Friday. This is Friday and Saturday, this is in collaboration with FEMA, Ogallisou Tribe COVID Task Course and IHS. And so on Friday, this Friday and Saturday, the FEMA trailer will be at the Pine Ridge Power Grounds. This will be from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM Friday and Saturday at the Pine Ridge Power Ground. And we'll be offering, we'll have all three COVID vaccinations available. That's Moderna, Pfizer, and the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. We also have events scheduled at schools. There's on June 3rd, we'll be at the Crazy Horse School, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. June 11th, we'll be at Little One School. June 12th, we'll be, up to Saturday, we'll be at the Veterans Watchy Bee with the mobile unit offering COVID vaccines. June 15th, we'll be at Pine Ridge School, 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. So we'll get updated flyer out. Otherwise, we can also at these events, we're offering routine vaccinations. So if people have not had their vaccines updated, we're offering those at these vaccine events as well. So it's opportunity for anyone to get their vaccines updated, including the COVID vaccinations. We're continuing to provoke preventive healthcare, school physicals, sports physicals. We're getting those arranged and we'll be sending out flyers about that as well. And just continue to encourage people in the community to look at getting their preventive healthcare taken care of, including colonoscopies, mammograms, and other healthcare evaluations that help prevent or detect early cancer, which we know is, we have high rates of in our communities. On the inpatient unit, we've continued to have an average inpatient census of about 15 patients. That's including inpatient and labor and delivery. Our OB unit, Surgery Department, we have continuing surgical services, basic surgery services such as, you know, appendix needs to be removed or gallbladder. We have two operating rooms that are currently open that includes a C-section room. We're undergoing construction right now to expand our central sterilization area, which is very important for infection control for our Surgery Department. Cardiology Clinic and the Echocardiogram Clinic is ongoing monthly. But we do, when we look at contract health referrals, if our cardiology clinic is booked up and we have an urgent referral come in for cardiology, then we will refer them out to Monument. We won't make them wait. But just for people to know, sometimes those appointments at Monument can take a while as well. In our dental departments, we have some new hires there at Wembley Dental. We have a new dental assistant starting and this is going to help us be able to provide more access for the dental clinic. We also have some new hires coming in at Pine Ridge Dental Clinic and at Kyle Dental Clinic with us, a new dentist there as well. Right now, our Pine Ridge Dental staff are rotating through the Kyle Clinic until the new Kyle dentist starts. At the Wembley Health Center, we have a new mental health specialist that will be starting there. And the services currently offered at Wembley include women's health, podiatry, pediatrics. We have staff rotating through there as well. At Kyle Health Center, we have two nurse practitioners that are starting and another additional nurse practitioner that was recently hired. We have a psych nurse practitioner being advertised for Kyle and Wembley as well. Those are some of our updates for the clinics. Regarding pharmacy, our pharmacy is continuing, our COVID vaccination team is continuing to offer information on the Keely Radio Hour every Friday from 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM. And we answer questions and try to address people's concerns regarding COVID vaccine hesitancy. Again, regarding contract health, we didn't contract health, we did install the lock boxes at each clinic entrance. And we have implemented the log to track PRC bills that are dropped off. And those are some of the main things about contract health. I think someone had a question.
Oh, yeah. So I got, what are your councilwoman, Mohawk, Western, councilwoman DeBrey, councilwoman Carl.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess my question, I guess, first of all, just want to thank you to IHS for, you know, coming all this way to give us the report. I think sometimes we really get on you about things that are not being done for our constituents, our tribal membership. But I will say that a couple of months ago, I had surgery in the hospital. And everyone that said, what? You had surgery at IHS? And I said, yes, I did. And it was, everything came out good. And I want to thank her, the doctors and the nurses, especially the surgeon, you know, everything went well. And, you know, I was really treated well there, I will say, by the nurses and the doctors that took care of me. And hopefully not because I was a councilwoman, they probably never knew that. But at the same time, you know, they were very respectful and they took care of me from the time I got admitted in the ER that night till I went through surgery the next morning. And it was gallbladder surgery. So I do want to say that, and I just want to thank you, thank your doctors and nurses that, you know, took care of me there. You know, and I think that, you know, some of the things that I've heard from our district membership is always about not only the billing part of it, but, you know, I really believe that, you know, some of it is just routine things that, you know, they just want to always know, podiatry for one, you know, when are they going to have podiatry clinic? When are we going to have a, you know, a dentist? I was hearing that, I'm glad you brought up the dentists and the things that are being, people being hired there because someone mentioned that they went to dental and they really had a good visit. So I'm kind of seeing things improving since I've been on council and always having to hear Indian Health Service when they came to the council, you know, to give a report. And, but I do want to know, I guess, when you're talking about the vaccines is, have you started to give vaccines to the 12-year-olds on up?
Yes, we have. And that is an area that we're promoting and that's why we're continuing to work with the schools, for example, especially like Pine Ridge School is still having school right now. So we set up that event. And then to date, we vaccinated about 200 12 to 15-year-olds. And so that's information that George has with the public health authority as well.
Okay, that's good. I think, I know some are hesitant about getting the vaccine, but I do know that there is some that do want to get it. And I think that, you know, school is coming, the summer fall, I'm kind of thinking the schools might open up. So I know a lot of our schools are probably looking at, you know, backs, you know, getting all of the younger kids, 12 years old and up to get vaccinated, you know, with this COVID. So I'm really glad to hear that. The other question I had is, you know, and I think Mr. Dillon brought it up a while back, is how many of these COVID patients across our reservation have been, I guess, looked at in terms of a follow-up? Because I think a lot of times you get some of them talking about they still don't have their taste or smell 100% back. They might have some type of issues with their lungs, breathing, tiredness. I've heard that. And I really believe when you're talking about preventive care, you know, it's always up to our tribal members to, we always are told, take care of yourself, you know, don't, you know, you know, eat right, exercise, you know, all the time. To me, that's part of preventive care. And I really sometimes think that, you know, you know, us as our, you know, ourselves, sometimes we neglect to do that, you know, as tribal council. And I know that I'm, for one, sometimes do that. And then my family's, you know, getting on me, Mom, you're not doing this, Mom, you're, you know. So I always hear that from my family. So I just wanted to say, ask you, you know, with all the COVID patients that got COVID this past year, I just really hope that IHS is following up to get in touch with them and say, come in for a checkup. Because we like to, you know, check, you know, make sure everything is, you know, you know, going good for you health-wise. I mean, have you reached out to a lot of them?
Yeah, we have reached out to some of them right now. One of the main ways we do that is through our case managers. And unfortunately, right now, we only have two case managers, but we're working to hire more. And we have developed a questionnaire. It's actually based off the National Health Science, which is through from England, with their physicians there implemented. And we're using, we changed the wording a little bit because the way they use the English language is a little bit different. So we're starting to use that protocol to ask certain questions about post-COVID syndrome, about the things you're talking about, fatigue, cough, things that really interrupt function. And then we would use that information to determine, to get them back in with their primary care provider and then determine if they need follow-up specialty referrals.
But one last question on that same subject. I think I asked at that meeting in Piayi Chomi is, some of them have come to a point with that COVID where it damaged their lungs. And some are waiting for a lung transplant. Have IHS kind of, are you guys stepping up to help those patients? I mean, I know they were referred from Indian Health Service to Sioux Falls or Rapid City. So I guess I wanted to know, how are you as IHS kind of keeping track of these patients that might need that care? The transplant of, you know, the lungs and all of this?
Can you guys, can you hear me? Okay. So I know regarding the specific situation you had inquired about before I spoke directly with that patient and family can help coordinate their care. And those situations are always challenging because you have to get the records, you have to get the medication list. You have to, also with, if there's specific referrals, we need them to see the primary care provider at IHS as well. So if there's more specialty referrals, we can send those from IHS. And then also if there's specific medications that are, you know, something that's not routinely something that we provide, then we'd have to coordinate that to order the medication. So that was all occurring after that time when I spoke with that family. But yeah, those are challenging situations because they have a lot of specialists involved. And I do think, you know, one of the challenging things is that contract health doesn't directly cover transplants. And so if we can cover all the supportive care that goes into that, but that is a challenging situation too.
And I want to have just a few more comments and references to follow-up. Right up with COVID patients because we're having a lot more frequently at their office, my chief medical officers, Dr. Lawrence and Dr. Holt, of starting to develop that routine, working with the CDC and IHS headquarters on what we're going to do to follow up with these patients on a regular basis. Because we just don't know the long-term effects of COVID is going to be here. So we're having those discussions. Once we get that a little more organized here in the coming weeks, Dr. Lawrence will be sharing that with the clinical directors and we'll be putting that into place in the protocols of our regular visits that we're having here. The second thing we mean is that, you know, we all have to realize COVID is here to stay. It's not going to go away. And it's going to be part of our life going forward. I think we've done a great job of mitigating and understanding of what to deal with it and how to cope with it. Now it's time to get back to, to what we do well, and that's providing preventive care and seeing our patients, listening to our patients and touching our patients again. And so we're starting to have conversations now of how do we get back to the pre-COVID activities that are there? And COVID's going to influence how that's going to be implemented, but we need to get back to that. And I think you're going to start seeing a lot more activity of opening it up. We're testing a case right now, one of our facility doing an open house to bring our patients back in and talk about how to access care again and getting that part there. So there's going to be a lot more activity coming up here in the summertime and prepping for that. And then finally, in closing, with the vaccine of the 12 and up on here right now, it's, they're only eligible to receive the Pfizer. We are anticipating that Moderna is going to be getting BAU authorizations for for vaccinations to 12 and up too, which will give us another tool on our belt to get to, out to our, that population that's there. We're hoping by winter or early next year, we'll be doing two and up, you know, that's on here with the vaccine. So that's where that, where everything is headed. And we're staying ahead of that and monitoring that. And as soon as it's available, we're offering it. The next day that was, that was authorized and we were, we were vaccinating in our sites there. So there's a lot of activity that's going on there. And I really appreciate your positive comments that they do, they do help the staff and the morale and all of the stuff that's going on here to hear those types of stories that's on. So thank you for that.
Thank you, councilwoman. So I got councilwoman DeBrey, councilwoman Carl, councilwoman Gillway, councilwoman Aron. Go to councilwoman DeBrey. Thank you, President Keller. Good afternoon. My question was, I guess it's not so much a question, but you say we only, with vaccines, only 14,000 people or something.
We've given 14,000 vaccines. But then if you look at the data that we give to the public health authority and send out, that will tell you how many people we vaccinated. Because if you think of each person, if they've gotten Moderna or Pfizer, they'll get two vaccines. So that's about, that would be about half. For example, I think we had about 7,000 that had received the boosters.
We have around 45,000 people in the region, so we're not even close to.
Correct. So if you look at the information that we send out, it's about 35 to 40% of, at least of our active user population. For those who are 12 and over, that's about 20,000 that are eligible for the vaccines. So if you think that those that are less than 12 are not even eligible for a vaccine. So this is also a way we really encourage you, a vaccine, that you're able to help protect the rest of the community that is not able to get a vaccine right now. So we really need people in the community to get vaccinated and to get their questions answered. I know people have concerns about it, to get their questions answered and to look at getting the vaccine.
I think at the end of, to build upon those comments and to where you're going with this is that at the end of every month, I ask all the service units to provide me the total vaccinations by age group. That's a report that's there and I consolidate that for the Great Plains area that's there. At the end of April, well, we were at 50% of our patients that, that were 16 and above have received at least one shot that's on here. That's a little below the national average that's there. Now, where's the, this month here, when I get my report here next week for the month of May, I'll start getting data and reference to all of that that's there. So it is a constant thing that we're monitoring, knowing that, you know, you hear a lot about herd immunity and getting it up to 70, 75% of our population that's there. You know, my philosophy has really changed a little bit on that, where it's important to get vaccinated. But I'm not going to continue to beat up our staff as saying, get those shots in people's arms. If we get 10 today, that's 10 that we didn't have yesterday that's on here. We need to get as many people as we can to do that. And I want to get as many people vaccinated. That's why we're monitoring the numbers that are there and the total number of age groups that are there. But we'll have updated numbers here in another week on here, but as of the end of April. And I know that it is a goal of our acting director, Ms. Fowler, to have everybody as 64% of, or 62% of our populations receive at least one vaccine coming up here this summer that's on here. So so we're well below that right now, but that's what we're working towards, you know, with that. So, but there's still a lot of a gap and it's going to have to come from communication from the people who got vaccinated. It's going to have to come from IHS providing the information to educate our patients, to make sure, to make them feel safe to get that vaccine that's there. And patient-to-patient conversation is all going to help you to get to that point that's there on there. So we're monitoring that, but we still got a ways to go.
Thank you for that. Many of these 14,000 are members and non-members.
We haven't been tracking that information because with the public health authority or the, the public health efforts, it's based on the community. So who's living in the community and whether or not they've been vaccinated to contribute to the herd immunity? That was a request, I believe, from the public health authority, but it wasn't approved yet. But mainly, we've been looking at those who live on Pine Ridge Reservation and use Pine Ridge Service Unit, how many of those are vaccinated? Because you want to look at who's in the community, are they vaccinated or not? And we know that a lot of non-tribal members live on the Pine Ridge Reservation.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, can, I'd like to give the floor to one of our elderly members. You can?
Sure.
How many do I?
Yeah, sure. Would you do that? Do you miss?
Thank you. My name is Don Doyle and I'm from the Eagleland District in Wembley. And I'm glad you're talking about the certain issue right here. My wife caught the disease back in February and spent weeks in a hospital, which are pretty tough time. We got vaccinated and she was feeling ill. So we went to clinic in Wembley and here her provider took the day off that day. So they told her, well, you have to see your provider, you can't see anybody else. They sent her home. And I was pretty well upset with that because I thought all I IHS facilities were for people, not just certain ones. And so she got a little sicker and we went in the other day and she couldn't breathe. So they could not diagnose her at Wembley. They didn't know what was wrong. They were debating whether to send her to Pine Ridge or Rapid City. So I suggested, let's just send her straight to Rapid City. They have better facilities and a machine, whatever, to help her. And in the end, they decided to send her to Pine Ridge. They sent her to Pine Ridge and next Pine Ridge could not diagnose her. And they had to lifelike her to Rapid City. And they got her up there and, you know, they did whatever they had to do. Finally, they diagnosed her with pneumonia, congestive heart failure, and a possible and so if they took my suggestion and sent her straight to Rapid City, we would have, you know, there's a possibility of her not making it. So they had to lifelike her. We never went, what did I do through that? And I heard you had a treaty meeting up here. And I hope IHS was there. Because the 1868 treaty is a legal document that the United States government recognized that. And so in that treaty, it says, the government's responsible for our healthcare. And every month, I hear you guys sit here hearing such stories like that and our people are being taken care of like they should be. And yet you approve their report. No, I disagree with that. You should not approve their report until our people are well taken care of, everybody, not just certain people. All of our people need that. Their report until our people are well taken care of, everybody, not just certain people. All of our people need that healthcare. We want to be alive. We're tribal members, enrolled tribal members, so we're part of that uh treaty. And yet, I I I hear the same thing from Mr. Driving Oak and Miss Jumping Eagle every month. Yeah, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that, and still our people aren't being. Taken care of like it should be. I uh catered to him, hoping that. My status as a tribal member will. Be can be heard, maybe give some thought to what's going on with our people. I have a card in my pocket that says, I'm an enrolled member of this tribe, so I wanted to see if that had any effect. Can I come in here? Can I talk? I thought this was. The Oglala Sioux Tribe is run by the Oga Keh. We select counselors to sit at a table and then speak for us. And we hire a pres- we holding a president who looks out for our welfare and safety. And yet we still have things that are happening. So maybe we're not doing what we should be doing. Right now, we have in my district alone, there's four alderies in the hospital and two are in Su Falls. Two are in Rapid, one's not gonna make it. Absolutely, the elderly lady over there. I don't know what the solution is. I just know that we need better healthcare. We need to stop uh playing the silly games that we play. Uh, maybe we need to cut out Aberdeen and get that money here so we can refer out our people to to other places when they need it. So we stop losing people. Maybe that's a solution. I don't know. You're you're we put you in these seats so you can think and and uh come up with these solutions for us. So we're not dying and we're not laying in our hospital. Now, after after since I get here, I went up to see my wife. She's been in there for six days now. And I think they need to, the clinic needs to research her. Because she's a little lung, the lung stuff that Sony talked about, that's they had to cut her open in the back and then stick a tube in there and uh drain that fluid out. So, you know, for future reference, if I should check on her and look at her records, then maybe you can help somebody else who comes in there with the. Same illness. But you can't talk about it. You gotta do it. Can't be saying we're gonna. We're gonna do this, we're gonna and then and another thing that was leaving me was the enemy said that we're gonna take her to uh Rapid or Pine Ridge. Took them two and a half hours to get there. Funny, I said, let me take her in my car. But that lady said, no, she's too sick to. If she gets sick along the way, what are you gonna do? But she just laying there, two and a half hours for ambulance to get there. Could have lost her there. How do we fix that? I thought we had a ambulance stationed in Wauwaii, but I guess anybody could call them in. I think they said it was that that day the ambulance was in Pine Ridge. These are the things that happen out there. They happen for real. And then we end up either losing them or. You know, there's gotta be some solutions coming up. We gotta get better. And if it takes moving Aberdeen out of the equation. You know, maybe that's the answer. Get more money so we can. Save our people. Every year, you guys can't be mean. We're gonna take care of the people. Well, I hope you do. I'm worried about my wife up in Rapid, you know, she recovers and comes home. What she went through already, like she didn't have to. We should have these things already placed and and uh their doctors can diagnose people on the spot. So I came here today to, you know, maybe tell the story, maybe we could save somebody else. Somebody else won't have to go through this and stuff here. So you don't have to approve this report today. You can say, no, we're not gonna prove this until the healthcare gets to the point where. Nobody's taking care of. So maybe my words don't mean anything to somebody, but, you know, I I just wanted to voice. My opinion and maybe save somebody else from going through the same thing that I I went through or I'm going through right now. So thank you for giving me a some little time to to uh tell you my story. Hopefully today you guys will not approve this report. Then uh I'm glad you can make it better for all of us. I have another issue I wanna bring up, but I'll wait till you've done this, this, you know, I H S and stuff. So hopefully I'll teach you. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you for that. Appreciate it. So I got Councilwoman Carl, and then Councilman Yellowboy, and then Councilman Harlock.
Thank you, Chair. I have uh five or six questions for you. Um, one of. The first ones I'm gonna ask is in regards to the COVID booster shots. I might have asked this in the past, but. I recently heard something where we may have to have a booster this fall. And um if if our constituents are being made aware that that is a possibility.
Well, so currently, per the CDC, there is no current recommendation regarding an additional booster past the two doses for Moderna or Pfizer. As soon as we know that, then we would inform uh the community and send out P S A's about that.
Okay, I thought I heard something about those who received the Moderna were the were the that vaccine, that vaccine, they would probably need a booster. And maybe I heard something wrong there.
So sometimes things are reported on the news before it comes out from the F D A or the C D C, so that might be part of what people are hearing.
Okay, the other thing I have is um in regards. To the dental clinic, is there budget agency as well, or do they have a separate budget? They do? Okay, um, one of the um uh calls I received was um one of the patients. I'm not sure. I think you mentioned that you had more um dental staff coming on in regards to dentists as well. Um, has their clinic um been extended, or is it still the same clinic? Hours or?
Right, the same hours. We are having discussions about whether we'll change the hours or spend hours or not, but that's an internal discussion.
Okay, um, also, one of the calls I received was a patient had gone in. I'm not sure if it was for a filling or a root canal, whatever, but um I guess there wasn't. Basic cement or whatever it is they use for uh filling. And the patient was through the way and had didn't receive services?
I'm not aware of that, so if you have the specific information, I can follow up on it.
Okay.
And you know that um one of our goals is to to perform root canals, and we need to get the materials that we need for that. But that's a separate issue than just the filling.
Okay, well, the reason I was asking about the uh agency, if they were part of the agency is. I didn't know if those individuals were being referred out, if they couldn't provide those services here.
The um dental does have a um, it's kind of like a mini P R C process. They have a a group of funds that's called Delta Dental, and Delta Dental manages it. And so there's a certain amount of funds that can be used for referrals. So they have their own prioritization process where some of those procedures can be referred out if we don't perform them.
Okay, now the other part is, excuse me, is in regards to the surgical staff. My understanding is that they were short. Short-staffed over there. It was a fact as I do go up there for um some thyroid infusions every three weeks. So I've been. Um, referred to the A C N floor, and I do get really good care there. Nurses are really good with me up there. Um, and I hope it isn't just me. I hope it's everybody that gets treated that way, but I'm pretty sure they do. I'll get good treatment. Um, the other thing is, in in regards to this, to the surgery clinic. I have an individual who has um been scheduled numerous times for a gallbladder surgery. Just recently, within the past week, I think this was maybe the second or third time that he's been canceled and uh called in. They canceled the the surgery. I can give you his number when we're done as well.
Okay. I do know, for example, we um we have right now, we're working out of two O R rooms. And one is specifically if we have an emergency C-section. And then we have to make sure we have the other room open in emergency. So an example is this morning, we had to move back a dental case. Because we had a emergency C-section this morning. So there are times that those things will happen. Um, once the construction project is over later in the summer, we'll have all three rooms back and those, so that should not be an issue. But I can follow up on that.
Okay. And then what is the criteria used for reaching out to those um COVID patients, those recovered COVID pa- patients? Is there certain material that you use? I mean, you know, not that they were just positive for COVID and had COVID. Does this, what's, what is exactly is the criteria this being?
Our starting criteria was gonna be those who'd been hospitalized or we had to send them out, um which also they would have been hospitalized for COVID. We were gonna start there. Because if you can imagine, there's probably over two thousand that had COVID, you know, so we had to start with some prioritization or um to start. Or somewhere on the list.
Okay, thank you for that. I I did get that text, so I just um put that out there. And last but not least, you know, um. I want to say thank you to the staff up there. We started with a a small group of individuals to say thank you and let them know how much. We uh appreciate their services. We started with the A C N nurses because we felt that. Those, those. Those nurses were some of the last faces that some of our people seen before they left and didn't come home. So we wanted to start with them. And um I know I feel um the the gifts that we did and the memorandum of appreciation were just. A very, very minute token of thanks to them. And our plan is to. Try to get to all the departments up there who have daily contact with our. Our patients. I know there are many staff up there who did contract COVID and was out themselves. So again, I just wanted to say thank you to the staff. Uh, truly appreciate everything that you do. And um, you know, I just so proud to. Um, have you as a tribal member who comes home and and takes care of our people. So thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilwoman, uh, Councilman Yellowboy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So um one of my questions is, and Ron hit on it a little bit, was. Well, did you say those uh total vaccinations were fourteen thousand?
Over fourteen thousand.
Over fourteen thousand? So my next question is, active. Active files. At O A, at um G O C Ole. Wrong hospital.
So so for twelve and over, um who are eligible for the COVID vaccine is about twenty thousand of active twelve and over.
Local residents.
For those who are using the service.
Yep.
Yes, that's twenty thousand.
So twenty thousand?
Twenty thousand patients that are active users of Pine Ridge Service Unit that are twelve and over. And so that's the population that's eligible for. That's the number we're using. I don't have a number for, I mean, you. Didn't have to decide for us from tribal meetings, discussions in the COVID task force, if there was another number. That the community would use for the Pine Ridge Reservation for those twelve and over.
Correct.
I don't have that number, but I have what I have available to me as Pine Ridge Service Unit active user population, twelve and twelve and over.
Nothing like uh just the reservation. So this is factoring in like people who live off reservation, come back in, utilize I H S and then leave?
Yes.
So in regards to. Herd immunity or patient, we're at thirty percent or whatever. So is that factoring in the residents not living on a reservation?
So the number, the twenty thousand number is the active user population for Pine Ridge Service Unit. Um, that's the number that I'm using to say what our um user population is.
So.
But if the the task force or the public. Health authority chose to use, for example, a census number for Pine Ridge Reservation or Oglala Lakota County. That would be up to to you to decide what population number you want to use.
So in actuality, thirty percent is not just for reservation, thirty percent vaccination rate is not accurate?
Thirty-five to forty percent is those who are fully immunized. And if you look on the information George sends out to you, that. Includes all of the vaccination data. So this is accurate for the Pine Ridge Service Unit.
Okay, but I'm looking at the reservation residents. That's what I'm looking for. Is it possible to get those numbers?
We wouldn't have access to those.
So this is where you'd have to decide if you're gonna use census data.
Right.
And if you use census data, um, how do you, because I've heard from different people in our discussions on the task force, how accurate is the census? This data. Um, so you have to start somewhere. This is the data we have, but if you choose to use census data, I don't even know when the last census was, but. Um, and then how accurate is that compared to now?
So so more or less the thirty percent vaccination rate. Is just for members utilizing the service unit here in Pine Ridge, correct?
Yes.
So we don't know our actual her actual vaccination rate. For the residents of the Pine Ridge Reservation.
You just keep in mind that the thirty percent that you're you're calculating on.
At the thirty percentage you're calculating on, we just added the group of twelve to fifteen. Okay, so so most of our vaccines up to this point have been sixteen and above on there. So and and that's the number we were going to. It's mentioned over here, uh as an area, we're about fifty percent of our user pop of sixteen and above. We've just added in the twelve to fifteen. And that's the number that uh gave you of the twenty thousand that goes down here. But we just started. We just started vaccinating that.
So, well, it's kind of troublesome to to learn that the thirty percent is an actual residence living on a reservation. That's troubling for me. But I can understand where you're coming from.
But we vaccinate anybody who wants to be vaccinated.
Right.
Anybody.
We shouldn't be falsely telling our residents we're thirty percent, and now we're preparing for powows and preparing for. You know, stuff like that, based on information given when we could actually get twelve percent.
That's right.
You know?
Well, just to be clear, that that we've been telling everyone the information that we have. And on the task force, we've had the discussion about what the population base number will be. And that's actually up to the task force and the public health authority to decide which um base population will be used by the Oglala Sioux Tribe. I don't control that. So I give. You the information that I have, how many vaccines, how many are fully immunized, but um and what our data is based on. And I only have access to I H S data. I do not have access. And I only have access to I H S data, I do not have access to. All of the tribes enrollment and all of the residents on the Pine Ridge Reservation.
So, okay, um, the the fourteen, is it fourteen thousand vaccinations or is it twenty thousand? Twenty thousand residents, is that what you're saying?
No, so. So to date, Energy Service Unit administered over fourteen thousand vaccines. And if you look at the data that um George sent out, which was probably on Friday. It includes the most recent vaccine data that was given to the O S T Public Health Authority. Twenty thousand is the number of twelve, twelve year old and over who are active users of the Pine Ridge Service Unit. And they're eligible for the COVID vaccine. That's the twenty thousand number.
Okay, so according to those numbers, I guess we're three quarters of the way vaccinated, I guess, right?
For those who are el- for those who are eligible for the vaccine, every resident on the Pine Ridge Reservation is not eligible for the vaccine, if they're. Less than twelve years old, they can't get vaccinated yet, we're hoping maybe in the fall or winter. Um, so if you imagine that uh twelve and over, if you think that, let's say. Based on what number the tribe determines, twenty five thousand people live on the Pine Ridge Res- Reservation. By sixty percent of those are eighteen and younger. So that's where the tribe or the task force of the Public Health Authority has to extrapolate and determine what is your population base? What is zero to a hundred year olds, how many of those are twelve and over are eligible for the COVID vaccine? So that's why I'm seeing, it's even more important if you're twelve and over to get vaccinated, cause you're helping protect those. Who can't get vaccinated, who are less than twelve. So even at. This point, we could probably only vaccinate fifty percent on the Pine Ridge Reservation who are eligible for the vaccine. And of those fifty percent, some don't want the vaccine, and I can't make them get it. But as much as I can, I'm gonna try and vaccinate anybody who wants the vaccine on the Pine Ridge Reservation.
Okay, so I got that answered, my next question is um, and maybe this is appointed to or appointed to Mr. Driving Hawk was. Since. The administration of either Moderna and Johnson, has the C D C or any or F D A have seen, and and the vaccines have been out for. Pfizer's been out for quite some time, is. Has they, has there been any. Substantial side effects after individuals have taken the Pfizer vaccine?
There have been a side effects that's on there, but I don't know what you mean by substantial, uh uh you know, with that.
Any life changing. Some side effects, children can't produce.
We have, any, anytime anybody has any type of reaction, all, we put it into to the database that goes to C D C. And they're tracking all of those that type of events that are there. We've, we've had people, you know, with the headaches and the fevers and, and and the Bell's palsy's have come up with that uh uh on there. Uh um, we've never heard of anything of of uh people. Uh um, not be, you know, it's one of the rumors were that you're not able to have kids, that that's not, that has. Not been verified or anything, you know, even some, some of the recent things that you're hearing in reference to some of the the twelve and above, above. Vaccines have developing some type of of uh a heart issue that's on here, that's not, they still not proven that's related to the vaccine. That's on here, so all of those information and all that studies and all that, it's still yet to come out, we, we, and we'll, we'll get that information, just like when. Johnson and Johnson had their pause with the clotting, when I H S acted immediately and held to that, you know, that was on there and and we waited. For the guidance to come down, you know, with that, so, so I know that the Chief Medical Officer at Headquarters communicates with all of our medical staff. At the areas and improvise them with daily updates in reference to uh uh issues and when it comes to the vaccines, our vaccine committee. Uh uh that uh reached, has calls with all of our tribal partners and all of our federal sites, weekly, share that information with them, uh that's on here. Uh uh, but it's all the vaccines Pfizer, Moderna and and Johnson and Johnson have all been proven to be uh. Safe and effective vaccines, uh that's that's why we're promoting it.
Okay, um, Mr. Chair. I'd like to yield the floor to the committee member for five minutes.
Good afternoon, my name is Staris Morrison Crow, I'm from Ovola District. I um came out to the. Casino for a little bit and then I went to radio and I heard this man talking back here and I, I really wanna encourage you. COVID hurts families. Today is five weeks and Monday, my brother's been in ICU on that. And so I know of the struggle you're facing with your wife having COVID. It's hard, it's hard to find resources every day to get to the. Hospital. It's hard when you get that call and they say your family member called it so many times in Monday. It's hard to go to your cap offices and apply for assistance when you need to be somewhere right away. And it's hard whenever your family member goes to I H S and they give him a diagnosis that wasn't COVID. And after the test and looking into it in Rapid, we were finally told the truth. Today is the first day in five weeks and one day, my brother got to stand up. Attached to a bunch of life support machines. So today I'm asking all of you that are here to address our house. For the people on the Lakota. Nation that you remember, that families that are directly affected by COVID really need help. Really need help, you need to set aside somewhere where families can come for support. Not only for mental support, but financial support, encouragement and prayer. Cause it's hard. It's hard, I followed a lady on Facebook that suffered, was suffering from COVID and it made me cry and. Never thought it'd affect my family, I pleaded with the Creator many times this past weeks, don't take my brother, my mom has never lost a child. To those of you who wanna gather for Ovola Nation, come gather at Monument Health and see how many are on life support. Fighting to live. Come see, they put tubes in their stomachs to drain air because their lungs are getting air pockets. Leaking air into their bodies. They put blowholes in their chest to release the air. They do everything they can to save them, so I know what this man's facing, cause we've walked this road for weeks now. And I wanted to talk about another thing. No, I was not vaccinated and I cannot be vaccinated because of my health. I'm high risk with high allergies and have many times went into anaphylactic shock and one of the. We, one of the effects from COVID vaccines are anaphylaxis. So my doctor put in a request for me to be tested. By an allergist in Rapid City to see if I would have a reaction to the COVID vaccines. I'm still waiting, I got that, I got that referral way before my brother got COVID, I'm still waiting. I thought that it would be paid for and addressed long time ago and I'm still waiting. So you need to realize there's people that live, take EpiPens to survive. That are really high risk that need to be tested before you even give them the COVID shots. I don't wanna die, I wanna see if I'll be safe enough to take the shot. So there's a lot of things out there going on with this COVID stuff, so I really hope you guys address it and look into it. It could appear out there, where can families go for support that have loved ones fighting to live in the hospitals? Where do we go? If it wasn't for Tyler Yellowboy giving us money out of his own pocket, hearing our messages from Monument Health and helping my mom. We wouldn't even have been able to be there every day. We're Ushika, like a lot of families here, we have hard times. We have hard times, we'd rather get gas and sit there than eat. And pray that someone gets better, our loved ones get better, and I've been there for weeks and I've seen a lot of native families facing that struggle at the hospital. We share. Maybe some days we just have lonely and bread, but we share. And we try to help one another. So thank you Tyler for reaching out to our family, cause it's been rough. Thank you so. Much.
And I really pray for you.
Thank you for coming to speak, appreciate it, uh, so Councilman, uh, Ironclaw.
I just um, I just have one question and um. I was thinking about these powwows, powwows that we're gonna have. And um with our, with our rate, with our rate of thirty five percent or thirty four percent. Do you think it's safe to have a, to a little powwow like that or? Or do you think it's safe to even have them?
I would recommend reviewing the um, the task force's recommendation, right now we're in the yellow zone and I believe that um. Recommendation is for gatherings of fifty is my understanding, so unless that were to change. Um, I would recommend following those uh guidelines that have been sent out by the task force. Great, and this also follows the C D C um. It's based on the the data and the community, um as far as uh COVID positivity rates, um E R visits, uh hospitalization data.
Uh, thank you, um, and I, I guess, you know, just, just in this lines of questioning, um, to either Dr. Jupney or Mr. Driving Hawk. Um, in terms of like, it's, you know, women conversations, I see nationally is to incentivize. Taking that COVID shot, and I'm not sure that's been discussed. But since, you know, I H S is for, you know, for whatever reason, whatever reason, it's not really. Um, uh, it, it, you know, it, they're the primary terror provider, you know, so you know, we don't, we have any option here to quote, you know. But I'm not sure if any other hospitals like nationally are offering incentives to their community members to go take shots and all that, I know governments are. But because Dr. Feller, you know, offered the sixty two percent to get you there, I mean, has that been talked about at all? Or just because there's been money in it, runs amounts to, to help with that process, so I don't, I.
You know, we, we are not able to use our appropriated dollars to incentivize the, the vaccination side of the things, but our tribal partners can. And we, and we do have our tribes doing that, we have several of our tribes who are offering raffles. Uh, on there, they're offering gift cards to come in and get, get vaccinated on there, so, so you have a lot more. Flexibility with the rescue funds and the COVID funds that you have received on there than we do. In reference to that, so, so we've been working and collaborating with our tribal partners on, on our events and they, and the tribes will come in and say, well, we're gonna. We're gonna provide a pizza for everybody who wants that, or we're gonna provide, you know, a twenty five dollar uh gift card to, to Walmart, to, to who gets vaccinated. The tribes can do that, come into our events and, 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 and work with, work, work with us on, on promoting those, those type of things that are there. Uh, we're not able to do that, but, but uh you guys can do with the same money that you, that we got, uh, you're able to, to offer that, you have a lot more flex- Flexibility with that, so, so as you have, as you creative you get with that, reach out with Dr. Jumping Eagle and, and the vaccine teams and, and uh, and definitely uh. Uh, let's merge our resources and our efforts and, and try to get as many people vaccinated as we can.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Councilor, uh, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And we're here, uh, uh, just, what do you hear from over, from my district member also, from uh. Okay, here, that's a hero. Lot of our uh, tribe members, that one got that uh COVID and then they suffered with that. So uh, it's a, it's a virus that's been here for, been over here now, then. I hear there's a variant virus that's pretty contagious, you know, so and then uh. As far as the numbers goes, you know, it's, we're not uh. Had a good numbers percentage wise, a lot of people that. Don't take that uh, uh, COVID shot, you know, and then, uh. My district, we don't have a hospital, we're in a, uh, it's quite a ways, we only entered a district in One Bleed, you and this district, and that's quite a drive here just to come over here. Take about a little over two hours just to get here. Come across that bad land and so forth, and then uh, pretty hardship, especially during the winter time, during the winter time, it's pretty hard to get. Point A to point B sometimes and then uh. Transportation wise, it's pretty hard for our people, if they don't have a vehicle to uh. Get point from point A to B, you know, especially, we don't have a hospital out there, so if they need to, to get the iller emergency situation, then uh. The uh response time is pretty, pretty slow, you know, so we have to wait for. Evidence of either lifelike, the helicopter, the chopper that comes in from Rapid City to, to uh come after the patients. So uh. When you, when you. To work in some way, we can get a helicopter, One Bleed Health, so all we have is just a health center that. Um, yeah, see the doctor or whatnot, and then we have to go to that clinic, we get put it out to uh. With the hospitals, you know, that's Pine Ridge or Rapid or the other area, maybe Sioux Falls, that's quite a distance. So they lifelike them and it's got a hardship for the people, you know, and you get tired, caught up with these uh health bills, especially. With that lifeline, it costs quite a bit of money, uh, they have to get caught up with the uh patients. Doctor bills and it's, I know we've been discussed what are, urban about the bills here. As far as the uh COVID shot that uh been discussed here, I think, I think uh. You should have a boots and a ground so forth with the I H S uh field, field nurses to go out there uh. To wear or uh, away out there or. To, to get, which, you know, instead of appearing behind me, where we got more uh. Residents here, the Pine Ridge area, but talking about the. Ovola Nation power that's coming apart and then we, the numbers are, not as to where, where we would like to see, you know. Hundred percent, but, you know, it's pretty low and also it's kind of a, um. Situation where uh that can spread again if that COVID, you know, so, uh, especially with. Their youth, you know, they, a lot of them don't wanna take that vaccination. And you hear a lot of them that get the side effects from that, and some of them that end up in hospital and some of them that passed away. And that really affects their respiratory, their lungs and so forth, you know, that here. A lot of them that ended up back in the hospital with that side effects and so forth, so. So there were people out there that really have taken that vaccination, so but, uh, in order for I H S. Is to go out there now, to where the people are, you know, to take the, meet, meet them in person or either family and then to see if they wanna take that vaccination, you know. Instead of being at the clinic or the hospital or here, you know, wait for them, but, uh. They probably won't be coming, you know, to, to get that shot, so I guess it's, there's two, two sides, sides ways to uh. To get that in order to get a counseling, you know, to counseling and then I hear that a lot of them have hardship with that, so I think with. The I H S has a, you know. Counseling for the families that were uh, threatened with this COVID and then also with the patients, so. Maybe uh the I H S and hospital staff and go out of districts, you know, from. In order to get that vaccination. in order to get that vaccination or either any counseling that's gonna be done, so. I just wanted to comment that, maybe what the, what the thoughts are with the, uh, CEO and also, uh, Mr. Driving Hawk, you know, to see what talk to the people, I don't need to go out there instead of, uh, being here in a hospital here, we don't have any, uh, services as far as the hospital here, so I just wanted to ask the, uh, staff here. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we, just to, to remind people that on June third, we will have a COVID vaccination event at the Crazy Horse School Gymnasium. Um, and that is for anyone twelve and over who wants the COVID vaccination. And just to clarify, I believe in the parents' service unit, we've only had, um, allergic reaction, we have had with the COVID vaccine, um, but we have had people, of course, who've had some aches and, um, you know, maybe flu-like symptoms after the vaccine. Um, we've had a few people that actually caught COVID before they had their full immunization, um, even after getting the second shot, but not waiting till they're two weeks out. Is, you have to wait till your two weeks after your second vaccine to be fully immunized, um, with Pfizer and Moderna. So, there have been some people who caught COVID right after that vaccine, but before they were fully, um, had their full immunity, so, um, but just wanted to clarify that. So we have been, um, in March, we were in at least fourteen, uh, different communities. In April, we were in, I believe, about fifteen, and we have, um, other events scheduled this month that, I believe, at least six events scheduled this month, but we'll get the updated PSA out. So we are, um, doing efforts to, um, go out to the communities and we'll continue to do so and, and try to put it on the beginning available to anyone who wants the vaccine. Thank you.
Yeah, and I just wanna add a couple of things. The, the numbers of positive cases, uh, um, have been going down, uh, on here, uh, that's there, which is, which is a good sign. But there's one number that continues to stand out that I look at daily is the hospitalization rate of the positive patients are staying pretty consistent. That's on here. So, so, um, uh, it's so important and the gentlemen's story in the back and then the ladies are here, you know, it's so important to, to do whatever we can to prevent the spread uh, uh, on their vaccine is, is our, uh, our next line of offense, uh, defense that we have right now. Uh, you know, up to this point, uh, last summer, last fall, this last winter, you know, all we had was the mask and social distancing and washing our hands. Uh, now we have the vaccine to, to, to add to that, and that's been a proven fact that it will prevent the spread of COVID. It will prevent your from maybe more severe in your body, uh, reacting to it on here. There are some side effects from time to time, uh, like Dr. Jumping Eagle just mentioned, that's there. Uh, but the benefit of that is for sure outweigh the, 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 those type of side effects that are there. Um, and, uh, we have to do what we can as leaders of our community to educate our community as much as we can to, to, to promote and to give them the information and the tools uh, to understand how to, to prevent the COVID. Uh, because like I say, if you do get it, our hospitalization rate is one number that's been consistent uh, uh, on here and, and, and that's, that, that is something that we need to try to, try to prevent that's on here, so. So, uh, I'm glad to see we're out in the community like you're asking and then offering the vaccines, and we'll continue to do PSAs to try to get the information to our populations to help them, to give them the understanding of how beneficial this vaccine is, so. Okay? Uh, thank you. Uh, thank you, Councilor, any questions? Uh, hearing none. Um, I think, I think we're good, so, um, if you have closing comments, this one. Yeah, I, I really appreciate, uh, the opportunity to come in here, meet with you, uh, again. Uh, as I say, every time I come to a council meeting and learn more, uh, it does motivate me to go back to my staff and have them be more creative and come up with more, uh, solutions, uh, to this, but, uh, uh, this pandemic that we're in, uh, I, I've said this several times and I think I've said it to speak, uh, this is not an IHS problem, this is not a community problem, this is all of our problems. And as leaders, we need to work together to try to do what we can to try to get on top of the COVID on here. We need to work together and share these type of stories and to share these, uh, these challenges that we have so that we can continue to improve healthcare. Uh, like we talked about earlier, from nineteen ninety-three, when you first took the EMS program to two thousand and twenty-one, it's a completely different way that we have to practice medicine today, and we have to keep up with the times, uh, and, and continue to work together to try to solve these pretty, pretty substantial issues that we're, we're dealing with here on here. But I'm confident that we can continue to communicate, we continue to work together. We will continue to see the improvements that we, we've had. It's slow, but it is improvement, uh, that is there and, and, and we are committed to, to that part of it there, so. So thank you for your time today and, and, uh, at any point in time, uh, President Keller or anybody else, I've always been accessible. Uh, if you have a question or comment, uh, that, that you need to get to me, uh, please feel free to reach out to me and, and we will be responsive and, and provide you that information, so. So thank you for today and, and thank you for being, for letting me be part of your honor ceremony and, and the lunch that you provided.
And I just like to let you know, follow up on the issues that you raised, and I'll let you know, um, that I followed up on, on that with the questions that you brought. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Chairman, thank you, Dr. Yelich, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Davis, thank you, uh, Mr. Berchel, appreciate it. Um, so, Councilman, I think we're on item number seven? No, item number nine, actually. Yeah, so we'll go into motions now. So, EBD, and again, Council, so, yeah, we can do five minutes, so, five minutes. And, and again, we'll, we'll be at a five-minute break. Uh, we have dinner coming at five, or it's, it's right here now, it should be ready in about twenty minutes, so just do a couple of motions, get that started, and then, uh, then we'll recess at five, so, okay?
People on Zoom, we are on a five-minute break.